Good morning. The meeting of Baltimore City Council Education Workforce and Youth Committee is now called to order. I am Councilman Stokes, Representative 12th District, Chair of the Committee. Members of the Committee are Councilman Zeke Cohen from the First District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th, and Council Vice President Sharon Green-Milton from the Sixth District. Also, we have Ms. Tiffany Macklin from President Mosby's office, and a member of the staff is Trey Hayes. Today, the Committee is holding a hearing on LO-24-0065 Baltimore City Schools Concentric Education Solutions Data Review for the purpose of reviewing data from Concentric Education Solutions who support Baltimore City Public Schools, families, and their students in overcoming obstacles to academic success. Before we start, I just want to thank Dr. Heber for coming before the Council to present some of the great things you are doing in 26 schools here in Baltimore City for the last 15 years. And you can go ahead and introduce yourself and your staff.
Thank you. Good morning, Councilman Stokes and distinguished Council members. Thank you for the opportunity for us to be able to come here and just have a conversation and share everything that we've had the privilege of serving the citizens, families, students of Baltimore City for the past 16 years. I'm joined by my esteemed Chief of Research, Dr. Ivory Tolson, professor at Howard University and concerned member of the academic community, highly touted. And she had to step out by Chief Revenue Officer Molly Abair Lloyd, who has recently joined us as she's stepping up now with the written testimony. But yes, we are a Baltimore-based organization. We have been serving Baltimore City and the families for 16 years, and we just look forward to sharing the information with you.
Also, I recognize Melissa Broom from the CEO's office at No Family. Before we start, I just wanted to give you a little background. Concentric Education Solutions provides wraparound services aimed at addressing barriers to student success such as truancy behavior issues and socioeconomic challenges. The review will analyze collected data to access the impact of these services on student outcomes, identify areas for improvement, and determine whether current approaches align with the city educational goals. So, Doc, if you want to start your presentation?
Absolutely. So, I wanted to give a little bit of an opportunity just to give a broad picture of the why. A lot of times that we give data and we're flushed with data and it's quantitative, but really looking at the stories behind the numbers and what has kind of gotten us here and what drives us. My esteemed mentor, Dr. Freeman Vabowski, has always says that you have to have a potential promise and purpose, and it's the stories that drive us and the passion that leads us. And so, again, I just want to thank you. Again, my name is David Heber. I am the CEO of Concentric Educational Solutions, a Baltimore-based company dedicated to supporting students, families, and schools by identifying and addressing barriers to the educational process, specifically chronic absenteeism, mentoring, and tutoring. I'm here today to speak and share about what we have learned over the past 16 years from listening authentically to students and families. After conducting over 350,000 in-person home visits, 350,000 in-person home visits in Baltimore and listening authentically to students and families, they have spoken loudly and clearly about how they feel and what they need. But before I kind of go into the numbers and kind of highlight it, I want to give you a brief, simple narrative and take a moment and just share our why. I struggled with this last night, and I'm not one for over-preparedness. I believe it's best done organically. And I woke up this morning after getting in late last night from New Orleans thinking about, how do I crystallize and how do I bring together what 16 years and what Baltimore City has meant to me? And the privilege it's been to serve. I'm not a native Baltimorean. I'm not from here, but I've been adopted. And there's something unique about Baltimore. A lot of people always ask, as if I had the privilege to go across the country, like, why Baltimore? And I say, if you don't know, you don't know. And if I can't, I might not be able to explain it, but if you go, you can feel it. And so, my journey started from Delaware. So, of course, I was born in Delaware. We boarded Maryland. I had never been to Baltimore as a child. And through a lot of various different circumstances, I found myself at the prestigious Lincoln University, the first HBCU in 1854, I might say. And at Lincoln, I had the opportunity to become a triple major. And it sounds a little bit more impressive than it actually really is. It was just a way to take three more classes to get a double major, and I had this grand goal of becoming an attorney. And because my life went a different route, I didn't have that luxury. So, I decided to be a teacher. So, I picked up my third major in education. And this is back when you had to do student teaching and 12 weeks in the classroom and learning. And I did my 12 weeks, became Student Teacher of the Year. And when the recruiters came, they asked, where did you want to go? And Hartford County was there. Hartford County had not yet really been a diverse county, and they wanted diversity in their teaching force. And this was 1999, 2000. And I applied, and as a young African-American male, I was readily hired. And that is before I disclosed my scars, because we all have stories. We all have our journey. And I disclosed my scars, my journey, my background. And they basically said, don't call us. We'll call you. And they rescinded the offer. And this is after much heartache that I found myself a graduate, and I could not get a job. And I remember a recruiter, Mr. Hunter, still to this day, a recruiter from Baltimore City Public Schools, came up, and he was interviewing, because they needed teachers as well. The teacher shortage is not a 2024 phenomenon. It's been a phenomenon across the board. And I said, I got to be honest. I'm going to apply. I would love to come to Baltimore, but I'm not unmarked. I'm not a perfect person. And he said, no one is. Do you care about the students that you're going to serve? And the students that you serve can benefit from the scars that you have if you're honest, if you're transparent, and if you're authentic. And they offered me a job. And I came here and became a first-year teacher at Forest Park High School. And I simply asked my principal at the time, Loretta Brines, that, are you sure you want me? And she says, not only do I want you, but we will love you. And if you give yourself to Baltimore, Baltimore will give itself to you. And I began that career. For eight years, I went through teaching and administration, and I had the privilege midway through to meet the man that I referenced before, Dr. Freeman Vabowski. And I think everybody probably knows Freeman's name. It's broadly, he's a proud son of Baltimore. And Freeman showed me the importance of being unconditional. And I give you this backdrop, not to bore you or to make it bigger than what it means, but to simply say that is what allowed us to do this work for the past 16 years. Even before I just got here a little bit late, it's because I was speaking to a student and a family. And students and families, unfortunately, cannot be just lumped into numbers. It has to be listening. Sometimes that's listening longer than what we thought. But when you connect with them, when you feel their energy, and you're driven by the things that move them and the stories that they have, I think authentic results are possible. So, I was the administrator. I left Baltimore. I left Baltimore in 2006, and I went to Washington DC. And during my time in Washington DC, I started thinking about this novel idea in education. What happens if we actually put students first and adults second? What happens if we put students first and bureaucracy last? What happens if we talked? What happens if we listen to what people needed as opposed to us telling them what we thought they needed? And right around this time, there was a tragedy in Washington DC that kind of really galvanized the thought around what we were doing. And that tragedy was the Benita Jacks tragedy. And it was awful. And a summary of a tragedy, it doesn't do it justice, but I'll give it a shot. Four young girls, school-aged children, went missing in November. They went to four different schools, four different schools. They were, no documented efforts were made from different agencies about why they were not coming to school. Not the schools, so it's not just the schools' challenge. They were in DHS, so it's not just DHS and government challenges, but they were getting some other additional nonprofit assistance. Three different types of entities, and they were not talking to one another. So, speeded up to March, a US Marshal went to evict Ms. Jacks. And when they went to go evict Ms. Jacks, they found the four decomposing bodies upstairs in the closets. Six months had gone by, and nobody checked on these students. No one talked about it. So, I took that concept, and I took that tragedy of putting the students at the center of what we do and say, how can we fundamentally fix education? And I think if we could fix it, it would have been done. I don't think it's one panacea. But I do believe that there's some low-hanging fruit that we can all come to and share and actually break over any lines that may divide us, any policies that may separate us, or any challenges or opinions that we may have that divides us. And so, I started Concentric Educational Solutions with the premise of saying this. And I'm a little old-school here, and I've had the distinct privilege and pleasure of speaking and having intimate conversations with all of you. Is what happens if innovation, in the midst of AI, in the midst of rapid technology growth, what happens if innovation is simply knocking on someone's door and asking them, how can we support? So, I took that approach. 16 years later, 350,000 home visits in Baltimore City. Baltimore City was the, Baltimore City Schools was the first city, was the first school district to give me an opportunity to take this concept and put it into practice. And we've learned a lot. And I know all of you have experienced this in your careers as politicians, as public servants. Like, how do you listen? How do you understand what your constituents may want? And a simple answer is, one door at a time. No one person's issue is the same. Their challenges are different. But when you sit there and you listen, I know all of you in your respective districts, as you see people on the street and they're talking to you, and they will just come up to you. I have the same feeling now that when I'm walking, I'm seeing students. I have the privilege of, my office is right across the street from one of my very first students at Southwestern High School named Mumbles. And he, taking a pause, because I don't want to get too emotional about it. I remember him going through a lot of challenges. And recently, he came to my office, and he still calls me Belly, not Dr. Heber, not Mr. Heber. And he gave me his All-City Medal for the 400 meters. And he said, thank you for being my father. And I didn't even know what I was doing at the time. And I'm sure each of you can share similar stories. So, that is our why. Our why is not just steeped in what we're hearing from students. It's steeped in our own personal stories, our own personal traumas. I think a lot of times, we expect adolescents right now to navigate this ever-changing world and complexities, and we, as adults, haven't even figured it out ourselves, and we struggle. And the why is to look at each student and say, how can we be supportive? And so, that's the why. All right, now, what is the what? There's so many different interventions. There's so many different supports. There's so many different pathways. But the question I would ask anybody is, how do we bring them together? How do we share the stories? How do we share the supports? How do we share the heartaches? How do we share the triumphs of what students and families are experiencing? And we were afforded, in a very disruptive time during the pandemic, that we, the world, was forced to slow down. And we were forced to listen and reconnect with one another. And it gave us a wonderful opportunity of innovation and a wonderful opportunity, as Freeman says, of Niyatni, having a new mindset or understanding what got us here in the first place and leveraging it. And now, we're four years out, and I feel that there's a regression back to the bureaucracy and the separation before the pandemic. The uniqueness that the pandemic forced us together, we're coming back to that place where we're compartmentalized, and we're not sharing what can happen. But I think with the leadership of the Council of the Public Servants, we can break that down. So, what issue are we trying to solve now? Wow, chronic absenteeism. It's a huge buzzword that crosses politics, crosses social-economic barriers now. It's always been an issue. It's nothing new. It's just got more limelight. But with the limelight comes added responsibility to do something about it. But if you focus on chronic absenteeism, we're missing the mark. Chronic absenteeism is not the issue. It's a one part of the problem. Students and families feel disengaged from the educational process. They do not feel heard. They do not feel listened to even when they speak, when they speak loudly or by their actions. And as we conducted all these home visits and all these different challenges came up, we thought that there were some very tangible solution, such as technology. And systems did an amazing job of mitigating those factors. And let me say this specifically on the record, and I've shared this with the CEO of Baltimore City Schools, and I've shared this across the country when I've given the opportunity. Baltimore City Public Schools, as maligned or criticized as it may be, as challenging as the challenges may exist, they did a bold step, unprecedented step, at the very beginning of the pandemic. Baltimore City Schools, I am confident now in saying this, because I thought about it, but we did some research about it, was the first major urban district to do in-person home visits during the pandemic. Schools shut down March 13th of 2020. The first in-person home visit happened 58 days later, under the guidance of Dr. Santelis, but under the direction, and I don't think that he gets as much credit as he deserves, Mr. Rogers Shaw. If you don't know Mr. Rogers Shaw, he is a die-hard, dedicated professional of Baltimore City Schools. He leads with his heart. He leads unconditionally. He gives by sacrificing. I can't tell you how many students he's fed, how many students he has provided things for, how many times I've gotten a phone call saying, Heber, this family needs something. Can you do it? It don't show up anyplace but with the student and with the family. But Mr. Shaw said, the students who would not come into school before the pandemic, what do you think is going to happen? Do you think they're going to become more engaged, sitting at home? Or do we have to go out and touch them and understand what they're asking, understanding what they're needing? And we did that. During the pandemic, we had the privilege of serving Baltimore City Schools and conducted 75,000 in-person home visits during the pandemic and during the hybrid learning. And here is what we learned. And this is in the PowerPoint, but I kind of want to open it up for questions. Transportation is an issue. Technology is a barrier. But the number-one impediment that students are saying is they don't feel connected to multiple caring adults. So, if you think about it, Councilman Cohen, I know your background as a teacher. How many times are students welcomed by how many people during the day? There's a saying that the work is not done by the clock. It's done by the job. The job is not complete. The task is monumental. The effort is going to be a lot, but the possibilities are endless. Chronic absenteeism or student disengagement is just one issue. If students are not in school, but more importantly, if they're not engaged, the question then becomes, what are they doing? Where are they going? There's a direct correlation, my professor taught me this, Dissertation 101. And Dr. Tolson, I know he probably teaches this as well. Correlation does not mean causation. However, there's a distinct connection. If you listen to students, if you listen to parents, and through these home visits and talking to parents, this is one truism that we've learned. I've never heard one parent say, I don't want what's best for my child. They just probably not know how. It's incumbent upon us, the leaders, the educators, the public servants, the business community, to come together, share information, share resources in a meaningful way that tackles this not, it's not an educational issue. It's a public health crisis. If we look at chronic absenteeism, student disengagement, from a lens of education, we will never get in front of it. We will never tackle it. We will never change it. We have to look at it as a public health crisis that needs all sectors to come together and drive the change. And it starts through authenticity and relationships. But it can't stop with that. It has to come with aligned resources, integrated supports, honesty, transparency, and the ability to do what's necessary for students and families of Baltimore City. Members of the Committee, it's been my distinct pleasure, again, to serve for 16 years in Baltimore City. It's hard to speak about Baltimore without becoming emotional. In all of its challenges it may have, it's very beautiful. I'm reminded of a favorite poem of Dr. Vabowski with Desiderata. And it really speaks about going placidly amid the noise and the haste, and remember what beauty there is in silence. Let's open ourselves up to what our students and families are telling us. And if they're telling us, let's have the courage to listen and act. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Heber. Can you, before you start, can you talk about, because you just talked about Baltimore City. You need to talk about all the other schools that you have staff, and you have a great staff. I think you've got over 100 employees, you know. So, can you tell us what other schools your program is in besides Baltimore City?
Yeah, we started, thank you, Councilman Stokes. We started in Baltimore City. We branched out into Maryland, large footprint in Michigan. So, let me give you some specificity. River Rouge School District, Ecor School District, Westwood School District, I'm mentioning Michigan right now. Wayne Westlands, Lincoln Consolidated Schools, Ypsilanti Schools. I don't want to miss anybody, but here in Maryland, we're in Baltimore County Public Schools. We're in Prince George's County Public Schools. We're in Loudoun County, DCPS, Greenville in Georgia, Greenville in Virginia, Montgomery, Alabama, Birmingham, Alabama. Shout out to Dr. Vabowski. I told him I would mention him today about, he's a native from Birmingham. Bessemer City, we're in Texas. So, this is not, the issue of chronic absenteeism, students not being engaged, is not germane to Baltimore City. It's across the board, and it's transcended socioeconomic barriers. We're working with one district in Wayne County that the average median income for the family is over $300,000, $300,000 per year. It's not just, it's not just limited to students and families and economic challenges. What we've been able to do, though, and I'm very proud of this, is we start talking about this teacher shortage. But I think part of the issue is we're looking at the teacher shortage and how to solve it in two conventional ways. So, there was a disruptor in the early 90s, and Councilman Cohen, I hope I'm not wrong with this, Teach for America '92, something like that, right? Teach for America was, it took a very novel idea and expanded upon it. And so, one of my other mentors said that great people bar, good people bar, great people steal. My teacher pipeline, my PSA pipeline, professional student advocates, was copied and borrowed from Teach for America. How do we get young, hungry, passionate people from the community with shared experiences and give them tangible skills? And so, we quickly went from 20 employees to over 100 across the board. And we used the HBCUs in those regions. Like, this wasn't really rocket science. But what it did do was inadvertently create a teacher pipeline through our PSA model. So, there's a, I don't want to say it's a misnomer, it's true. Teachers are underpaid. Educators are underpaid. Public servants are underpaid. But with teachers, if you're a young college, and I know all of you are young, but think about if you're going into college and you're thinking about picking a major. A lot of HBCUs have, do not even have education programs anymore. A lot of, I mean, that's directly where it is, right? They're, just education programs across the board are not as plentiful as they were. Why? Humans have changed. Society has changed. Why go into teaching? It's not going to make me a whole lot of money. I'm going to get burned out. But if you can spark the passion in them early. So, with our PSAs, our professional student advocates, we bring them in, and we don't give them the lesson. Like, it's not lesson plans. It's not evaluations, and it's not with the union. It's, do you care about kids? Yes. Do you want to go into the community? Yes. Do you want to connect with them? Yes. And by giving them those three avenues, home visits, mentoring them, and tutoring them, which we know tutoring is an effective way, and I will even say this, in-person tutoring is a very effective way. You sparked the interest. I will say this, 38 of my former PSAs are now teachers that were hired by the district they were serving. That's a success story to me. It's creating and giving into the, giving into the pipeline. And what this has been able, allowed us to do with this unique challenge is broaden our staff, diversify our staff, whether it's Molly as our Chief Impact Officer, Ivory as our Chief of Research, and you know, this is a corollary thing. Ivory is an amazing guy, other than being a member of Alpha Phi Alpha. Yeah, he's okay. Is that I never would have thought 14 years ago I could have the pleasure of working with Dr. Ivory Tolson. He is the equivalent, and he's too humble, of DeBoer's. He's our modern-day DeBoer's. And just expanding across the board, I'm not sure, Anthony Morris. He is our Executive Director of Concentric Wholeness. Because what we found was, if we bring them back into the schools, and schools do not have the capacity to do something and support the students, what's next? How can we broaden our mentoring and our overall mental health capacity? So, we created Concentric Wholeness. And Anthony came up as a PSA doing home visits, right? Being in schools, tutoring, and now he is the Executive Director of our mental health organization and a proud graduate of Lincoln University, right? And a member of Capitol Office of Attorney Incorporated, but let me not digress. We have Elliot Chavis, who is a recent graduate of Lincoln University, who does home visits. He's in the audience from our staff. So, our staff is a representation of the various students and the families that we serve. That was a long, circuitous route to get, to answer your question.
Thank you, Dr. Heber. But we want to start with questions on Council Vice President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for that young compliment. Being the most senior on the Council, I appreciate that. And also, you had mentioned Wayne County and very close to Commissioner Alicia Bell, which is the, yes, we are members of NACO together and exchange a lot of information. And I'll have to have continued conversation about this meeting. And when you were starting your, I guess, conversation, and as soon as you mentioned home visits, I circled it on this paper to remind me to just ask you this question. But I'm so glad that that is definitely included, and you have it kind of at the top of the list, just a very important piece. And I guess my question to add with that, how do you make parents accountable when you do the home visits? What are some things that you do to make them accountable and help, you know, depending on what the environment is for that child in the home?
Great question. Thank you. Thank you so much for that. So, one of the things, and I stand by my remark, you are nothing over the age of 25, so I stand by that remark, is when we were coming, when I was coming up, let me say that, we were tried to, we were scared into attending school with attendance officers and truancy agents or attendance agents and truancy officers. It was very punitive. What we have found is what's not sustainable is incentivizing your way to student engagement and/or punishing your way to better. and/or punishing your way to better attendance and student engagement. So you have to lead with the heart. So directly to your point, we bring resources or the accessibility to resources, uh, that students and families need. A lot of times, it's not the lack thereof, and, um, if you indulge me for forty-five seconds, I'll give you a quick story about a student in Washington DC when I first started, uh, at Anacostia High School. Kevin was a third-time ninth grader, he was seventeen years old. Uh, and Kevin was on our list. Well, seventeen, you, you've hit all the at-risk factors across the board. And we went on a, a home visit on a Sunday morning to his home, and we knocked on his door, and I spoke to his grandmother, and she came out and said, um, sweetheart, I'm about to go to church, but why are you here? And I just said, we just want to learn about Kevin. What, what's the challenges? Kevin's not coming to school. And sweet, sweet lady, she said, child, ever since that boy lost his headphones and I can't get his medicine filled, he doesn't go to school. And we said, what medicine? So I'm not being a doctor, but I know a little bit, know a little bit. She brought out his bottle, and his bottle was for schizophrenia. Thank God, thank God I could Google, uh, use Google. And head, when, and then with the headphones, if a schizophrenic, a person who's diagnosed with schizophrenia, the headphones keep voices out their ears. So he would leave out the house with no medicine and with no headphones, and he would never make it to school. So we simply brought, this is back when MapQuest was there, and I was only using Google Docs. Thank God now we have a student engagement app that can give resources in real, real time and all that stuff, and track the data. So I took this information back to the schools, and, uh, Councilman Cohen, I know you'll, you'll appreciate this. Schools are set up, it's not that we don't have information about students and families, it's that schools are compartmentalized not to share information. Not maliciously and with ma- with malice intent, it's just the word compartmentalized. And so we're walking, we're, we're going around as a part of our home visit framework and saying, well, Kevin doesn't have his medicine. The dean, if you don't know what dean is, like, think behavior, support and stuff like that, the dean of students said, yeah, he was, he was institutionalized for two weeks during the summertime. His caseworker said, well, I never knew that. And it starts, the conversation starts deconstructing. So part of what we do to get parents accountable is start with sharing the information, the resources that they may or may not even have access to, and helping them with, uh, accountability partner. So one of the things that we've done very intently is the name, there's power in names. Our professional student advocates are professional. What does that mean? They have the hard skill set and soft skill set to connect to the students and the families, many cases in which they came from. What do they do? They're about students. And what are they supposed to do? They advocate. That means if resources are needed, they identify them. If resources are, uh, resources are available, they get them to, to them. If the resources haven't been identified, we gotta go get them. Right? And then we have to start thinking outside the box that people are linear. Policies does not, policies do not change mindset. Practice, effectiveness, accountability, authenticity affects people's heart. Think about how many times right here where you're not supposed to make a red light on the corner of President Street. How many of y'all still make that right? I don't want anyone to respond. Right? It's a policy. But it's, it's, it's really hard. Until something touches your heart about it. Maybe someone, uh, there, there's an accident there or something like that. So to crystallize the response, it's really bringing the resources to the parents and working with them. Caveat is, I'm a proud father of many children. Many children, right? I'm an educator. I struggle. I struggle. Even though I'm supposed to be an expert. Right? Understanding if you bring to the table that parents are trying to do the best that they can with what they have and nurturing it and building a relationship, that if they mess up or can't execute the first time, you still stick with them. And the reason that's important, Freeman should have given up on me a long time ago. Hell, God should have given up on me a long time ago. I'm glad he did.
Thank you, and my, my last question, Mr. Chair. Workforce development, um, as a former educator and director of the state's apprenticeship system, workforce development is very important, really, in this whole process. And as the school system knows also for me, uh, financial literacy and really getting that across in high school and just getting the students prepared, even, you know, for interviews and it's just, everything is so lost. What are you, what do you do different, or what have you found to really be helpful in that process?
Great question. This came up yesterday in one of our, uh, in a, uh, talk and share that we had in New Orleans. What are we preparing the new workforce for? Right? There was a generation, uh, me included, where it had to be college. It was college or bust. It's not college or bust anymore. Our young people are so entrepreneurial and innovative, and this is not germane to Baltimore City, but it's across the board. Education is the slowest industry to catch up to the times. One of the least innovative ones. We're, we're ten years behind. What Dr. Tolson is doing with professional learning, with, uh, with AI, the introduction of AI, the, the, uh, the ethical use of AI, teaching, to, to your point, and understanding individualized, Baltimore City did a great job with student success plans. It's basis, it's basically individ- individualized learning, uh, plan for each student. Understanding each student and what each student needs. Yes, there, there are basic things that are needed. I'm not, I'm not going against that. But what our professional student advocate does is by building that authentic relationship and understanding what that student and that family needs, trying to align that student and that family to what their interests are and what their passion is. So Freeman always says, uh, enough, enough shout-outs for Freeman now, that's, that's the last one, is potential, promise, purpose. Potential, promise, purpose. What is your potential? Your God innate abilities. What is your promise? Teaching our young people that you have to nurture that potential. And what is the purpose? What is the, what is the, what is the driver behind that? And we have to excite young people about what is next. Go on all the days that you're going and being forty-five-minute block, ninety-minute blocks, and going to, uh, going to college. One will argue now, and I think there's some conversation around that, a lot of conversation, is, is it financially a fiscal investment, a sound fiscal investment to go to college? That's a, that's a fair question. If you can't afford it, and you can't get grants, and you can't get, uh, uh, other support, what happens for those students that, uh, do not want to go to that, uh, to, uh, higher education? But they want to try something different. How can we increase the college and career readiness? The CTE. Uh, I will say this, and I would offer for Baltimore City, I know Baltimore City Schools, you have a new director of CTE, uh, it's Somerville is there, right? Uh, who was at Carver. There's a, there's a, uh, school district in Wayne County I would offer a city council or Baltimore City to go to. Go to Harper Wards. It's on the east side. All right, so don't let east side scare you. Not every east side is bad. Right? It's right, uh, outside of, uh, it's one block from Demby High School. Right, which is, uh, uh, Detroit Public Schools. But Harper Wards had a innovative print, uh, superintendent. Uh, Stephen McGee. Uh, and he is, uh, amazing visionary superintendent, although he's a member of, uh, of Mega Sci-Fi. Uh, he's very innovative, right? What he did was, he purchased the old Circuit City building that went, that went out of business. He created a whole CTE program in the old Circuit City. So not just like making food like what Carver does or Forest Park, if you know that, or a, a lot of the great things that Mover does, but it's so adaptive that it becomes, they're building houses right now. And now what they're doing is not, they're not just building the small houses in the old building, the Circuit City that's renovated. They're teaching students to get their real estate license. So that, that was a free plug to, uh, Harper Wards. But it, it's amazing building.
Just one final comment. This was under former, um, Council President Jack Young, um, leaving as, as, uh, mayor. We, uh, together worked on a health program at Pimlico Elementary and partnered with Sinai. And it was, uh, for eighth graders, getting them early, and it was so successful that at Forest Park High School, which is in my district, now has a big program, trying to hold on to those eighth graders there. They're really like creating their own workforce. So, um, just very happy and proud that that program is continuing. I don't know if you are familiar with it, but...
Forest Park has been, so I started my career at Forest Park. The old Forest Park, which was the new Forest Park from the old, old, old Forest Park, right? Um, but yeah, I started my, I started my career there, um, just, and we've been a partner with them for fifteen years. Uh, but you, no, absolutely. How do you, there's, uh, for teacher pipeline, they're saying grow your own. Right? How do we grow our own workforce? Through students. They are so, they are so sophisticated, you know, now you can't say I don't have the money. You, you, uh, if you're trying to buy something from students, they're like Venmo me, I have PayPal, I have Cash App. Like, they're, they're on it. And if we can hone those passions and those skills, we can get them excited, and you can feed that passion at the same time as getting them school, uh, through school and give them those, those skills that they need.
If I can add just one comment to the conversation on workforce development, because it's so critical to our North Star, right? And how we're serving our students and our families. So one of the really special things about Concentric and what makes us different is how we are serving all of our communities, right? And how we are intentional about hiring from our communities to ensure that our staff is representative of the lived experiences of the students and families that we serve. Same thing applies when we're looking at building a pipeline for workforce development. It looks different in every community where we go. So for example, in Baltimore, if we're looking at the industry here and how we're pulling together different industries and community partners, we could take shipbuilding, for example, and say, okay, let's find these different partners in industry who are very focused on this local opportunity. And let's work and collaborate with them to build out internship opportunities. They may already have one in place with school systems. Fantastic. Maybe we can build on top of that to provide a virtual internship so that we can give more opportunities to more kids. So we're working directly with community partners everywhere that we work to ensure that we're building these authentic opportunities for kids in the communities where they're from. And that's one of the neat things that we do everywhere that we go that makes us different, so.
That's why our council too is so supportive of the youth works program. It's just building, you know, the business, and it's just such a great experience for our students. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the dialogue.
Councilman.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, Dr. Heber, I wanted to talk about, um, the return on investment. Um, you mentioned, which is such a wonderful number, three hundred and fifty thousand home visits, um, in your sixteen-year career. Can you speak to the return on investment from a financial perspective? And Melissa, this is really kind of going back to, um, an issue and a concern that most of us brought up during the budget meetings about, um, not only just wrapping our arms around our students, but making sure that we have that, that return on investment perspective. So if there is a need to shift, um, within Baltimore City Public Schools, we have that data to support it, so, Dr. Heber.
Yeah, so if, if you look at the, uh, per pupil allotment, and it's changed throughout the years, it's gone up. And Baltimore, um, Baltimore specifically, but across State Miller, with, with Kerwin Funding has, has given Maryland an unbelievable leg up in, in many instances that will be able to even survive some of the, uh, very difficult, difficult challenges that Essar, that Essar Cliff is presenting. A lot of the great innovative things that Essar was able, that school districts were able to do with Essar funding, they're having to make very, very tough challenges. But if you, if you look at our fiscal model, for every roughly, say, two hundred and fifty dollars, uh, per student, if you took a five, it's changed a, a little bit. Say, let's call it three fifty now, three hundred and fifty, for every three fifty invested in a student for us, if we bring that student back, the, the, the difference is the return on the investment for, for the school districts.
And that's such a, an amazing, uh, number as well. I, I didn't know that it was three hundred and fifty to one.
It roughly costs us three hundred and fifty dollars ballpark per student.
Okay.
Right? And they have, they get multiple home visits. But if that student sticking, sticks, and what I mean, stays engaged, and we get them back, the, the financial ramifications are significant.
And the reason why I ask is because many, um, community members ask us about our per pupil, um, in the city of Baltimore. And it's, it's programs like this, when you're talking about that return on investment, the resource allocation, even, um, the professional student advocates that could possibly and hopefully are connecting not only with city-level resources, but state-level resources as well. That continuity between the organization, the schools, and government is really where I would love to see other organizations go in the future. Um, we have a lot of resources here in the city of Baltimore that simply people just do not know about. And the model that you're talking about, the, the PSA model, and even like the school community coordinator, they deserve this type of funding because we have, we have the, the data to show that it is successful. It's engaging parents again, it's creating whole students, and it's creating better communities. And so just a plug for, you know, your program and, you know, Baltimore City Public Schools, like, let's begin to utilize this model a little bit more to see how we can have a, a true return, true, true financial return on investment so, um, families can see the impact, we as a city, as legislators can see the impact, and nationally, we can begin to see the impact within our students in the city of Baltimore. Thank you.
You know, to put a little bit of, uh, a broader light on that is the pro, the, the challenges are so broad now that even with one community, and this is across the board, even with one community, uh, school coordinator that's supposed to bring all those services around, the, the challenge is so overwhelming that if quote-unquote, for tier-three or tier-two students who are identified that need the challenge, there's so many other students that could, that could benefit from the support. Date myself a little bit again, Southwestern High School. Right, like, that is why I really, Forest Park, love the Forest Park. Southwestern was a little bit different when I went to Southwestern. And this is, if you, I'm giving y'all perspective, if you remember the, uh, early, late nineties, early two thousand, Baltimore Hilton, Emerson Village, EV, LT, yeah, right? Yeah, yeah, that's right, like, I, I didn't, this is where I didn't, I knew that, yeah. Uh, it wa- it was real out there. But those, those challenges are so much, and I remember I was an administrator at Southwestern, and let me get back to the point, this is why I get old, is I remember we started with nine hundred incoming freshmen and a hundred eighty-seven graduated. And I remember seeing some students walk across the stage, and I was responsible, because I was the one running up and down the hallways and stuff like that. So the students who weren't necessarily in class, I remember some students crossing, um, the stage and us leaning, me leaning over as a new administrator and saying, you know, who's that? Right? There's a, there's middle students, the students that go under the radar. They're not at risk, risk, they don't have the risk factors, they're not straight-A students. They're just getting by. Right? And they're, they're unseen. Right? But there, there are the majority. How do we get more resources to them? And to, uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Porter, Councilwoman Porter's, uh, comment, yes. There, there is a direct return on investment. If you get students engaged, if you keep them engaged and get them active, you're also doing something else. You're decreasing the public health crisis of what's happening on the streets of Baltimore. They're, they're not, they're not part and parcel of one another. Right? Uh, unfortunately, the student, um, in your district, that one of the, during the Brooklyn Park. People involved in there had received three home visits for being chronically absent. The stu-, the, the young man, uh, for the, the squeegee worker was a student from Digital Harbor who was chronically absent. So, but we got to share that information and share that data.
And my next question, um, this is for Baltimore City Public Schools. Is there an out-facing or external dashboard that, um, partners that are connected with the school system can see kind of these data for students? So if they, if they wanted to, to research a particular student within Baltimore City Public Schools, and they are confirmed vendor with Baltimore City Public Schools, is there an external dashboard that we can see that, hey, um, this particular student has been absent this amount of times? This is, you know, some of the things that they're working on? I, I guess I'm just trying... I, I guess I'm just trying to make the connection, the, the data usage between the organizations so that the information sharing can be a lot more continuous. And if you can come to the mic, thank you.
Good morning.
Yeah, princess, yes.
Good morning, Melissa Broom, City Schools Legislative Affairs. You're asking if we publicly post data.
No, so it, I, I understand from a, a privacy perspective that we can't post, you know, a very key data to a particular student. What I'm looking at is some sort of agreement, similar to what the hospitals do. So in, in public health, you have community-based organizations that can enter into a data use agreement with an institution to ensure that, you know, data is shared between not only the, the organization, but also the institution. And it gives them particular kind of visual rights to see particular information that would be helpful to like something like this, a community, a, a community home visits or something like that. Does Baltimore City Public Schools have that?
So I think probably you all, Dr. Heber, you all could speak more, are more knowledgeable than I on the specifics. But I know like in speaking with Mr., with Roger Shaw in preparation for this hearing, I know that information is being shared between city schools and Concentric and other entities that we work with to improve student engagement. But I don't, I would have to get the details for you, but I know that goes back, back and forth.
What data, what data are being shared with you all?
So the demographic data, attendance data, behavior and academic data on that level. I think with more specificity, and I think this is a district outside of Maryland. It's a challenge with data, with data sharing across organizations. So where we have a data sharing agreement with Baltimore City Schools, another organization may have, will have a data sharing agreement with Baltimore City Schools. But I give a lot of stories, I'm sorry. Yeah, so if you all remember the, the famed singer Gerald Levert, right, this might be the first time city council, you referencing Gerald Levert. So a lot of people say, what killed Gerald Levert? And, and people don't know, it was overmedicated. He was taking medicines that were combating each other because his doctors weren't talking. That, to, to your, to your, to your, your health comment is, we are sharing agree, there's, there's data sharing agreement. And it's, and it's, it's going very well. It's how can other organizations who may be touching that same student share that information?
And Melissa, to, to, to kind of just give you context, so like prescription drug monitoring programs, that's exactly what he's talking about, like the information sharing between the two organizations so that they're not duplicating, duplicating efforts, but they're also not performing interventions that are contrary to each other, so. Okay, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
I've been searching for that for fifteen years, how to explain that?
Dr. Heber, I just have one, Vice President talked about apprenticeship.
Yes.
About back in twenty twenty and Ms. Melissa Broom know that we had agreement with Merbo, Westside Skill Center and Carver. Because when you hear principals talking about, I have six hundred students graduated, only four hundred going to college. What happened to the other two hundred? There's no balance in city schools to give out young people who don't want to go to college, who parents can't afford to go to college, don't have idea about college. But we have not nurtured that enough when we have these schools that teach electrical masters, electric, the masters in plumbing and in health. And back in twenty twenty, just before the COVID, we had an agreement with Merbo, Emerson, Westside, Skill Center and Carver with Michael Thomas, who is the Vice President of BCCC, that we were going to open those schools up in the evening from five to nine, Monday through Saturday, to give our young people the opportunity, we do not give them unless they go to college. You cannot be a plumber or electrician going to a class in half an hour, five days a week. So the reason why I say that, I would like to work with you and work with Michael Thomas, work with North Avenue. We need to make that happen. And even Ray Lewis was on board, but then COVID came, that's how it all ended. My other statement would be, how do we teach the parents how to advocate for their kids' education? And a lot of times, the parents, you send them home for them to read to their parent, I mean, to read to their kids, send them home to do the math, or some of the parents can't read, some of the parents don't know the math. So there's a real disconnect when they go home because their parents now need some help. With your staff and the great things you are doing, not just in Baltimore City, but all over the country, what would you recommend in terms of the advocating for our parents? Because I hear them say it a whole lot, and I know how hard North Avenue do that. But we have to find a way to teach the parents how to advocate for their kids' education. That's why when you go up to North Avenue, you don't see a lot of them there. They there unless it's something really pressing, they show up. But if you have a regular school board meeting, they're not there unless they get backed up into a corner on an issue that really affect them.
So I, I'll give you an example, I used Harper Words, I'll go use another district. The reason I'm saying I'm giving these examples is to show that they can be done. So for example, the example, Reford, another Wayne County School District, had a very innovative, simple idea. Dr. Serena Shivers was the superintendent there. And she used home visits not to combat chronic absenteeism, but to understand what the students and the families needed. If you remember in my, in the earlier part of my testimony, I said, if you listen to them. So what they needed was washer and dryers. It's a local community right outside Detroit. And so what she did was, now, she was Machiavellian in her approach, but it worked. She went to the local Rent-A-Center, got them, she only has eight schools though. So she got them to donate washers and dryers, put them in every single building. Open the washer, open the school's laundry mat up after hours on Saturdays and Sundays. So then what she then created was parent traffic. She then built a parent literacy program inside the school on Saturdays and Sundays as parents were washing their clothes. That led to a library in every student's family's home. That was her plan in the first place, to understand what the students and the families really needed. So to teach, you had to teach, she, and she took the concept from Jeffrey Canada in Harlem Children's Zone, right? The parent university, but the parent university was really focused on pre-K and neonatal. It was creating the pipeline to keep them all the way. So if you were a parent, you got the literacy piece, but then you got the additional supports of being in there on Saturdays and Sundays. Very, very easy approach, very easy approach. That was one way to get the parents in, because it's not just about feeding the parents. Like, that, that's been going on for seventy-five years, we do that, yeah, yeah. You can do that, the genius of the and versus the tiering of the or, and get them in to the building consistently.
Thank you, and one more, when we talk about food deserts in our community, we can go out, eat, a lot of people can't.
Yes.
So I always think about food deserts in somebody's house.
Yes.
So when young people come to school, if you go, you can ride past any store, they got a bag of potato chips and a soda, because that, that's what they have access to. So until we address the poverty piece with the schools, if they're not connecting, now you know why the kids sleeping in the classroom.
Yes.
Don't come to class, and, and you mentioned something about the washer and dryer, we did that at Cecil Elementary School.
Yes, yeah.
Mr. Robert Harrington, who does some great things in this city, Cecil Elementary School needed a washer and dryer. I called that gentleman up, brought it there and installed it. They were able to wash those young people that come to school because they, sometimes they come to school, their clothes are not clean. But you don't know how much it built up their confidence that now they have clean clothes. And the little things like that, the washer and dryer. The food issue is going to be an issue, we got crime in this city. But if you go back and look at people, what they do in terms of crime, it's because they don't have the basic needs, shelter and food. So they're going to do exactly what they need to do to feed themselves and feed their family.
Absolutely.
Councilman Cohen?
Thanks, Chair, thank you, Dr. Heber, for your work and to your team. Wanted to go back to a point that my fellow educator, the Vice President, made just about workforce and preparedness. You know, Baltimore is a meds and ed's town, right? You've got best hospitals in the world here, we have Care First, you know, health insurance. We have a, a lot of assets when it comes to the ecosystem of health. My colleague, Councilman Porter, has been talking about school-based health centers. I am curious how you all have tried to organize within that ecosystem. And you're absolutely right, when, when I was going into Teach for America, it was very much college, college, college. And I remember KIP to college was like the, the thing that they were putting, you know, it's just, that was the, the metric that everyone was trying to figure out. And I think there has been a shift as we've seen both the pandemic, the sort of college affordability bubble has burst. The folks can't, you know, get a great ROI on a expensive four-year education. And especially in a city like Baltimore, we, we really need to get ahead of the curve when it comes to what you mentioned around artificial intelligence, life sciences, data health, and then just jobs in healthcare, where we all know there's a profound nursing shortage and a lack of radiologists and techs and all these things. I'm curious how you've organized within that space. Have you been able to get some traction in supporting those types of pathways?
So, great question, and the process of what we're leading towards and has been. And so it's, it literally started as home visits, we always call home visits the one, because it allows us to understand organically what students and families need. But then it was, what do we, and COVID disrupted this a little bit, but then we were bringing them back to what? That became the question. And at that time, I want to say, Dr. Daryl Kennedy, who is no longer with city schools, but he is in Anarona County, Roger Shaw has always been instrumental in thinking about this. Chief John Davis at the time was in on, and Lori Lynn Sutton, who is, but. So they said, okay, you're doing a tremendous job bringing them back, but we don't, we don't have, there's the capacity for the need. They're, they're not, they're not connected. So that's when we start putting the professional student advocates. And the professional student advocate was really the person to start bridging those things and putting, putting that person in there. It's a seven days a week job, literally. So if the student's not coming, they go, they go get them, they're building the relationship with the mentoring. They're, they're doing the academic acceleration to bring them up, the high doses tutoring. But then they're advocating for and understanding what the, what the, what the students and those families need. The next evolution of it in workforce, for us, because our professional student advocates, I'm still old school. I talk about innovation, but you know, I mean, I'm getting up there. But our, our professional student advocates who are very young and they're hungry and they're passionate. So I speak to, without saying, I'm speaking to like Anthony Morris. He is always thinking of what's next, what is going to engage the young people. To your point, Councilman Cohen, yes, education and, and, and the health field. How can we then bridge that gap and bring those resources together where we have that partnership? With the expansion of growing to the fourteen states, bringing on staff members that can help me take that vision and bridge those partnerships. There, for a lot of companies, specifically like Concentric, you don't really, just like students, you don't know what you don't know and what's out there. But there's tremendous valuable resources, both public and private, that want to partner, that want to help. And connecting with the, connecting with those institutions and making that linkage. And that, that is what our one to two-year stretch goal is, to work with our professional student advocates, those industries, and, and create and help me bring that pipeline.
Councilman, if I can make one comment, is, you know, to piggyback on what David said is, you know, we look at how our PSAs are working with our students, right, and really being intentional around that. It's also with all of the different school systems that we're serving to look at, all right, is a profile of a graduate that they're using. What, what is their support that they are looking and working with with their kids to get beyond graduation? The metric used to be get the kid across the stage. Now our metric is knowing what every student is doing beyond graduation, and that has to be college or career. And so taking those industry partners that we talked about and looking at what opportunities we can do to intersect workforce development and K-12 education earlier so that we can capture our kids and their interests earlier and start to align our support through their K-12 experience so that they're aligning with the opportunities in their community beyond after graduation and being intentional and authentic about that, so that kids earlier on know what opportunities exist for them.
There, there's a vision that Mr. Shaw has. And it was creating this space, a specific space, a, a college and career, a CTE space that was not just in one school, but it was for those school, those students going through the re-engagement center that even with the support, sending them back to the very same schools that they, they were disconnected from, creating that, and then you bringing those industries into that one solid place. That is why I mentioned the Harper Words CTE hub. It's, it is truly one of the most fascinating things I've ever seen. Like, they, they have a gaming pathway, and the students are making almost two thousand a month as professional gamers, as students. That, that's, I mean, I had a paper route, right, like, you know, I mean, it was selling, you know, blow pops and Mike and Ice for twenty-five cents. Like, it's, it's fascinating.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate that. I think we have a lot of work to do as a city to really identify where are the high-yield career opportunities that are indigenous to Baltimore. And that's, look forward to having you all being in that mix in the next couple of years. Just the question around data sharing, I'm curious if you all have engaged at all with Baltimore's Promise. They're another organization that I think has really tried to understand and navigate some of the challenges. We know that our kids are whole people and yet they're part of multiple systems. And I think have tried to figure out ways to respect HIPAA and ways to respect privacy concerns, but also understand what's going on with kids. I think it's hard and a challenge for school system, for parents, for, 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 you know, to your story, for, for anyone to decode, you know, all the different systems that interact with kids. So curious if you worked at all with them, they seem to be really trying to get there in terms of having some robust data sharing agreements.
Yes, so, great, it's like, like a layup, we have a meeting with Julia next week. Yes, they're doing some great things, worked with some of their schools, Renaissance, Booker T. Washington. Yeah, yes, that, that is, that, that was the next step.
Good, look, appreciate, again, like I said, appreciate the work, really appreciate the focus on families and making sure the family is part of the conversation in a real and meaningful way. And I hope, hope to partner with you all and keep doing what you're doing over these next couple of years.
And I just want to say this, as much like animosity as y'all may get, thank you for your service. Just like, just thank you. All of you have been so gracious, so kind, welcoming. And it's, it, it's amazing that you're able to do what you're doing and just continue it. And we just look forward to being a partner. If it wasn't, if it wasn't for Baltimore, and this is not to be hyperbolic, I would, I would not probably be here today. And so Baltimore is amazing, right, so let's go all in.
Dr. Heber, real quick, I know we got, got away from it, because you're going to go through your.
Yeah.
Real quick, kind of.
Yeah, so we're looking at like the data, thank you, so. Yeah, so one of the things that we just want to kind of highlight about what we did just like last school year, eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-six home visits for last academic year. I think, this is kind of what we do, you can kind of skip through this, it's just the one slide, right there. If you go back, you, right there.
It's catching up, it's just.
Oh, this is yours or his? So you can go back to the home visit one, right there. So if you talk about the three primary services, and this is Jermaine to Baltimore, you can see that I'm from Baltimore because of accent now, right? Home visits, eighteen thousand seven hundred eighty-six documented in our student, in home visit app, home visits conducted, schools rehoo. Schools we, who received home visits, 23 schools, but that's also encompassing the re-engagement center that services every single school, uh, in Baltimore City, uh, as well. So that, that's kind of the caveat. And 10,00181, the number, uh, because some students and families receive multiple visits. And what you see underneath that is a process. So I do want to highlight this. So, um, the reason the framework is so important, home visits are nothing new. Home visits have been conducted when you lived in your community. I know, uh, Councilman Cohen, you've done it, Madam, uh, Vice Chair, you've done them. You're just trying to ask questions, but it's the, it's the framework that I think separates it. So before you do a home visit, we should come together and talk. What information do we know about the students that goes beyond the numbers? So we have a simple framework that says problem, call, solution, implementation, evaluation. The problems are the numbers, but that's not the endpoint of our data. People are humans. We are rich, we have rich tapestries of what we experience. What happens is, and I'll give you an example of a, uh, a tragic situation. If this home, if this framework is not followed, I, I had, uh, I'm 75,000 home visits in across the country, 75,000. Um, that's why I'm, my body all broken up like it is now. But I did a home visit and the pre-visit meeting was not followed. And when we did the, uh, home visit, I knocked on the door and simply said, trying to figure out why your student is not here, how can we be supportive? And she simply said, of course, my daughter doesn't go to school. She died. This is a true story. She was showing up as absent on the runs, on the daily absentee, uh, absent report, but no one, because it was skipped, no one gave context. That student would have come off the list. That's the most tragic example. Uh, another example would be, well, we know the context around why the student may not be coming and sharing that information in a meaningful way. Then you conduct a home visit, therefore you're not just asking yes or no questions, you're asking in-depth questions based upon some information that be given, uh, is given. All that's documented in the app and the data sharing that goes right back to the schools and the school district. Then you come back and talk about what are the outcomes and how are we gonna mitigate the things that the students and the families identify? If it's transportation, whoever is responsible with transportation gets a, an email, uh, right away, knowing that that's it. If it's, if it's a food scarcity, uh, uh, issue, whatever, whatever comes up, the person has to be, uh, get the information in real time. I'm gonna take this from Roger Shaw. Roger came, came up with this. He said, you got to give resources in real time. Resource, you cannot give delayed resources to people who need them immediately. So that's probably my last shout out to Mr. Shaw as well. Then you have to monitor whether or not the student is re-engaged, and then you go back to a tier home visit. The home visit by itself doesn't stop one time. You gotta keep going back. And you're building that efficacy, cause you're building also the familiarity and the relationship with the families. So that's it. The second slide after that would be, um, and I want to give a shout out to our PSA that, right there in the picture. That's Alejandro Jones, who lives in Baltimore, who was an HBCU graduates. And most of our employees stay and live in the communities that they work. Uh, tutoring, high-impact tutoring. There was a flush in education with ESOP funding around tutoring. And you have all these online virtual tutoring companies, uh, pop up. But here's, here's the challenge. The disconnect is thinking that students who do not have a relationship with anybody, or very little people have a relationship with the computer, or they're gonna log on. What we found is the most effective is when they have a connectedness to a, a person and that person can help facilitate the acceleration of learning. And so this is how many tutoring sessions we conducted, the number of tutoring session hours, schools who received tutoring, 19, I'm very proud of that. Many of those schools are high school. A lot of interventions and supports going into the elementary and middle, but what about the high school students? How about the high school students? And that was kind of what we kind of focused on. Student, uh, 2,500 and two students received tutoring. And this is what I'm very excited about, students' participation rate. You can have an intervention and they don't use it, it doesn't work. 96, 96% of our students are, uh, working on the intervention, which is the high doses tutoring. That's because they have the relationship with the PSA. It's not really, uh, if you think Madam, uh, Vice Chair and, uh, Councilman Cohen, I, at least I like to think I was. I think I was like the, uh, like the cool teacher and like the kids actually came to the class, right, which was step number one. But if it's born and they're disengaged, and that, not even they're not just born to disengage. Here's the amazing thing about young people that I think we forget as adults. Young people don't give a, about titles. They don't, authenticity trumps ethnicity. They care, do you, do you really care? And they can curse you out one day, you can say, I love you, and you, they come back the next day, curse you out, they come back the third day, and you keep loving them and they keep coming back. That's why. They, they're, they're generally engaged with the PSAs. That is, that is, uh, where we get the numbers with, uh, with tutoring. And district average, district goal was 75% participation rate, by the way. So we're 21% over that. And then mentoring. So mentoring is one of the most talked about things and least defined things in, across the board in education. But like, well, we need mentoring. Embedded mentoring is what the data shows works. What does that mean? It can't be in addition to, it has to be a part of, right? The mentoring is understanding the whole child, which is a, a 10-year buzzword. Before it was, uh, it, it was just, you, it, it was more than, it was, it's, it's social emotional. It's really the hu, the humanity of, of the, uh, of the student. And so this is how many mentoring sessions we conducted, mentoring hours, it's one for one. We did, we did three schools in mentoring. Coming out of the pandemic, I want to give, um, a context. Coming out of the pandemic, our PSAs did all three things simultaneously for students on their caseload. They mentored them, they did home visits, and they did tutoring. And the funding allowed that. So remember I was talking about the bureaucracy? But then what happens is the funding didn't support, wasn't aligned with a comprehensive model. Tutoring money had to go to, for tutoring. Mentoring money had to go to mentoring, home visits had to go for home visits. What works is when a PSA who has a relationship can do all three and figure out creatively that it's not just a strand of funding. Funding should support outcomes, not dictate them. Uh, and then mentoring session participation. So I'm really, I'm really happy about, um, happy about that. This is some of the preliminary data that we did around students' perceptions. Um, 85% had, uh, improved, uh, academic improvement, 87, 87 for behavioral improvement, 79% academic, I mean, attendance, overall wellbeing, this was self-identifying. 92% had a better sense of belonging and educated satisfaction. That was what was given to, um, teachers of the students that we were case managing. And kind of just what we learned, uh, home visits were designed to foster strong relationships between families and schools and identify, uh, and address barriers to student attendance and engagement. Students were absent most often because of student illness and lack of student interest. It's about getting, and this is, uh, uh, previous data. Um, tutoring, to further enhance our impact and transparency, we need to develop a more, a more robust system for sharing data between Concentric and the district, the data sharing agreement. This will allow us to independently share academic achievement data, demonstrate the full scope of scoot, of our success. And we just got to prioritize students being well, uh, their wellbeing and being empowered and feeling engaged into the school. And is that the last slide? Number one, exactly what I said, and I didn't even look at the slide, right? You gotta align it. You gotta align. Schools are componentalized. It's the integration of services and supports and information. Enhance data sharing practice and analysis, set up regular meetings between schools, schedule data. Be skip. Yeah, there you go. And then pilot service, uh, pilot service enhancements. We gotta continue, uh, improving, uh, and I think, uh, Councilman Cohen, what you said, really bringing in the, uh, the various sectors of, uh, of supports and interest for, uh, and, and opportunities for workforce development. Um, last one? Yes. That was AI-generated, by the way. So there you go. That's our innovation.
Well, Dr. Heber, your staff and your staff that's not here, the ones that are doing the home visits, you're doing some great things, not just in Baltimore City, not just in state of Maryland, but all over the country. But I want to say one thing to you, you came to me. You made a commitment. You wanted to come before this council and see what you're doing in the city. And I really acknowledge you for doing that. I didn't ask you, you asked me. So your commitment in Baltimore City, you can show it with the data. You can show it with some of the, a lot of the employees you have hired in partnership with North Avenue and the school system, cause we cannot do this stuff by ourselves. So a commitment to your whole staff, to you, especially what you went through to get to this point. You know, that's the story you gotta tell yourself.
The grind is real. Hashtag.
And I want to thank my colleagues for just asking those kind of questions. See, I got a real education on this a lot. I mean, you can look at the data, but the data is real. And that's what people talk about, the real data, not the, some of the AI stuff or cut and paste stuff you can do. So I want to thank you again and for attending this hearing as adjourned.
Thank you.